Call the regular scheduled meeting to order, please. We're gonna ask Councilman Cook to lead us in the opening prayer and Councilman Kunk to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Loving God, Maker of heaven and earth, protect us in your love and mercy. Send the Spirit of Jesus to be with us, to steal our fears and give us confidence. Guard us from harm during this storm season and renew our faith to serve you faithfully. Give us the courage to face all difficulties and the wisdom to see the ways your Spirit binds us together in mutual assistance. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We welcome you to the City Parish Council Meeting. We as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the fore and should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams seated to my left in the middle prior to the call of the agenda item. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and note the specific agenda item number about which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the council, please give those to Ms. Williams along with your blue form. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating, personal attacks, and from making confrontational or derogatory comments. I am requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I'm also requesting that anyone who approaches the council state their name and title for the official record. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by Robert's Rules of Order. Documents including agendas, ordinances, resolutions, and minutes related to this meeting are posted online at www.lafayette.la.gov or referred to the web address on the top of the agenda. The council encourages your involvement and participation by volunteering for boards and commissions. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, please call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the front door. Only a couple of council chair announcements tonight. Members, item number 11. Item number 11, relative to a bed and breakfast conditional use permit, Councilmember Bruce Kunk will be offering an amendment on item number 11. Item number 22. Item 22, relative to the Board of Review on assessed property. Appellants have withdrawn the following appeals, L through O and U through W. Some appeals have been withdrawn. Councilman Nakem is expected to be with us this evening although he is running late coming back from out of town on personal business. He's here. Okay. All right. Those are all the announcements that I have for now. Ms. Cook, council announcements, please.
Yes, thank you Chairman. I would like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 10 from St. Pius Catholic Church. If y'all would come forward with your leaders and approach the podium, we'd love for you to introduce yourselves, tell us what school you go to, and we have a couple of lapel pins to give you guys, so come on up.
Edo, you could utilize them both.
Look at ya.
My name is Barry Rosa, I'm the Assistant Scout Master now of Troop 10. I retired last year. This is, I don't even know how many years I've been coming here, it's been a long time. And this is Troop 10 and some of the adult leaders and some of the scouts.
I'm Ethan Como, sophomore, STM.
I'm Matthew Miller, I'm a freshman at the Early College Academy.
I'm Jonathan Furka, I go to St. Pius and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Andrew Shass and I'm in 6th grade and I go to St. Pius at 10.
I'm Jordan Boulay and I go to David Thibodeau and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Chaz Dyer and I go to ESA and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Joshua Belair and I go to Ascension Episcopal School, 7th grade.
I'm Wyatt Dolphin, I'm in 6th grade at David Thibodeau Stadium Magnet Academy.
I'm Noah Leonard, I'm a senior and I'm homeschooled.
Troop 10 is registered to St. Pius Elementary School but as you can see, we're cross-represented all over the South Lafayette. Noah is our senior patrol leader right now, is that right? So Noah is our, the young adult who manages the troop and runs the troop. And we're here, like we come every September, to see government in action, so hopefully we're gonna hear some spirited discussion tonight. Thank y'all.
I was just curious about maybe your service project. I see one of your leaders maybe can encourage something downtown. Are we thinking about a downtown service project? Just let us know, okay? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Okay, any other council announcements? There's none, we're gonna now move to the Executive Presidency Report. Mayor President, Mr. Robidoux.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All we have is, I need to introduce the budget-to-actual comparison of major funds we've made available to each of the council members, copies of the report that shows that comparison. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have either tonight or going forward as it relates to that comparison and that make sure that it's one of the new requirements or one of the new audit requirements that we make this available and that it gets into the minutes of the meeting. So that's the purpose of us introducing it here tonight.
Don't see any comments or questions at this time. Ms. Cook, I think we had a member just arrive, a scout. Can't get away from it, just showed up. All your colleagues have already introduced themselves. Come on up. Are you at St. Pius? Yeah, come forward and they have something for you. No, I'm sorry, to that mic. Don't come too forward.
He's coming for you.
Yeah, yeah. Just, they would like to know your name, the school that you attend, and your grade level, and if you're working on any other badges other than your community service here today.
My name is Mitchell Thornton, I go to STM. I'm a senior and I work on communication and a couple other mayor badges along with my Eagle Scout project and hopefully along with Eagle.
All right, congratulations. All right.
He's also working on showing up on time.
Yeah.
They had to call him out. They had to call him out, dude. Like, you got a good question on these.
There you go. Okay, we're gonna move to comments from the public. Again, this is the portion of our meeting is an opportunity to make your voice heard before the council, the administration, and the public. This is the time to speak about topics that are not included as agenda items. As I noted earlier, your request to make comments specific to an agenda item should be made prior to the call of that agenda item by completing a blue request to address the council form for each agenda item you wish to address with the agenda item number noted on the blue form. Please, we request that all matters regarding specific City Parish employees be directed to the administration, that it not be addressed at this public forum. We as a council do have a concern for the privacy and protection of government employees. With that said, however, if your concern is not resolved in either an expeditions or satisfactory fashion, there are other avenues which you can be pursued and we ask that you follow up with the council office. Any confrontational statements and or threats will not be tolerated. We ask that you conduct yourself in a civil manner with the same courtesy that you expect of others. With that said, we'll go to our first public comment, please.
The first of two speakers, Norbert Desitel.
You could use either podium you choose. Either one, yes, sir.
Okay, this is my first time, okay? So y'all be gentle. I have a question that concerns the neighborhood that I live in, which is basically by Lafayette High between Montigny and Vital, okay? And what's happened is this whole nature of this area right here has changed. The city has allowed these halflots that were created when Congress came through, they all now become little shotgun houses, but it's apparently UL doesn't have any room for these people. It's a bunch of young people that come into this stuff and the traffic is just getting really bad. The other, and, or do we have, I mean, an apartment, do we have apartments here? I mean, when they're creating like four and five people live in one, in one little two-bedroom house? That's number one. Number two, on the street, I really need some help on this because what's happened in our neighborhood and throughout the city, by the way, but in our neighborhood, the streets have become a parking lot. Because what's happening is all these people, and the way we live today, instead of having just two cars, we got sometimes as many as five and six, and what's happening is people are parking on the street. Now, I'm not talking about just a little bit, I'm talking about one night, I was coming down Congress, turned to the right into Montigny. When I got there, there was a car within 30 or 40 feet on this side. There were two vehicles over here that had the back end sticking in, over the street. All of this is into the street. And so I kinda slowed down like that and almost got rear-ended by somebody traveling at a normal rate of, rate of speed. But the thing about it is that when you turn in, all these, all these cars are on the street. And to me, I mean, that's dangerous and it should, and I don't know what, are the streets a thoroughfare or they a parking lot? That's basically what I'm asking. And I mean, I've had, I can tell you about many of them, I've had that instance the other night, I was coming back again, there was a car on this side of Montigny, there was a car on this side of Montigny, and I could just barely get through to get to my house, okay? And my question on that is, what happens if a fire truck is trying to come to my house? What happens? I mean, I could get, you know, in a regular vehicle, I could barely get through. What does an ambulance or a fire truck do? Is that, or the streets that we are paying for, are the streets a thoroughfare or they a parking lot? And I've tried to address that with several people and I don't know, so we need to kinda talk about that. And I think we also need to be talking about the occupancy. This is an old subdivision and all of a sudden now what's happening is people are buying up this, are buying up these little small houses and all of a sudden there's four and five and six people, you know, living in there apparently. And like, for example, like, yesterday I came over here to ask some questions and that was at 9:30 in the morning, there was a work trailer parked on Montigny as you come in and there were two cars parked over here, you know, sticking out into the street. And this was at 9:30 in the morning. And so I just, I feel like it needs to be addressed. And I don't know what the solution is, I really don't, but by the same token, people are parking in the street and the street isn't the place to park.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Desitel. Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Kunk?
Mr. Desitel resides in District 6 and we had a conversation this afternoon by phone and yesterday he met with council staff and the questions that he needs answers deal with zoning, parking, and traffic, and I've suggested to him that he make direct contact with Joseph Garden Wilts on staff and that he in turn will direct the questions to the appropriate personnel within LCG for answers and hopefully some resolution to your concerns.
And actually, we were just made aware that all of these requests have been sent in to the police department as well as the zoning department on yesterday to have those addressed, so hopefully he'll be getting some resolution soon.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Margaret O. West, and she did provide her statement in writing, her comments for the official record.
I am a proud citizen that lives in Ken Vudra's area of town and I have something I want to read to you today. In fact, it was published in the newspaper today, it's a letter to the editor, it's not a long one. Communities must be able to come together. Lafayette does know how to come together and support each other, but obstacles still remain. One important obstacle is the Confederate statue downtown Lafayette on taxpayer land. That statue does not mean what many people think it does. The Confederacy was part of the mid-19th century, but the statue was erected 57 years later after nearly two generations. In fact, the statue was placed at the height of a very different period, one where separation of the races in all aspects of life was mandated by law. Those laws were known as Jim Crow. The statue was erected in 1922 and we know through historic research and reports from the time that it was specifically meant to glorify, celebrate, and psychologically enforce white supremacy. This was an ugly time in American history and we must not forget it. If this statue causes pain today to even one citizen who understands its origin, and it does, it is toxic to our city and needs to be moved off of public land. It needs to be moved to a more appropriate setting such as a museum, just as other historic artifacts are. In such a setting, further generations can continue to remember and learn all about our history. It's time now for Lafayette to truly come together as we know we can. Moving this statue would be a meaningful first step to showing the world that our city is about including all of our citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. We thank those who did come out to address the council and the public. We're gonna now move to resolutions. This is a public hearing and blue sheets are available. Anyone wishing to address the council, the five-minute rule does remain in effect. Jeremy, can you please read item number six?
Resolution 37, 2017, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the filing of an application with the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement for the 2017 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Nakem, second by Cook, council discussion. There is none any blue cards.
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Resolution 38, 2017, a resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving the entity-state agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for the Local Road Safety Program High Friction Pavement Service Treatment Project.
Motion by Kunk, second by Lewis. Council discussion. There is none any blue cards.
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Thank you, Jeremy. Now we're gonna move to reports and our discussion items. Please read item number nine.
Acadiana Planning Commission, update on local road safety plan for Lafayette Parish and Louisiana Highway Safety Plan for Transportation Safety in the Acadiana Region.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I am Melissa Renewal and I am the Safety Coordinator for the Acadiana Regional Transportation Safety Coalition for the Acadiana Planning Commission. To cut right to the chase, what I do, what the coalition does, is save lives, specifically the lives of Acadiana residents while they are on our roads. And this includes all roadway users, cyclists, pedestrians, auto. Now you're probably wondering, how exactly do we save lives? The answer is we let the data direct our actions and coming up with plans for each of the four emphasis areas that I cover, which are occupant protection, that's wearing your seatbelts, making sure everyone wears seatbelts, and as you, some of you may know or may not know, it's National Child Passenger Safety Week, and that's making sure that children have the proper car seats, they're buckled in, safe there, where they belong in the car, whether it's in the rear front facing window in the back and things of that nature. And infrastructure and operations, and that's more of the structural things like our roads or the curves to, to sharp things of that nature, which Ms. Ashley Moran behind me, who's also with the Acadiana Planning Commission, and our crash guy expert will speak more to that, and also the local road safety plans, which is also each community can, Ashley will assess some problem areas in each community, like Acadiana Parish, all of our Acadiana parishes, and say, we can do this to mitigate some of those crashes. And the other two, the other emphasis area that I'm responsible for is impaired driving. If I can take a quick aside here, I love this community, we all love this community, but we have to acknowledge we have a drinking problem here. And specifically, and I'm glad to see the young people in the audience, because I do some programs that get them, as my grandmother used to say, bend the tree while it's young, to get good behavior going. We all want to have a good time, I'm not asking anyone to stop drinking and things of that nature. What I'm asking is to do so more responsibly. If you're a parent, don't be your child's bartender. You know, I would encourage, and Kenneth, we've had this conversation before, I'm not gonna bring it up here, but the under 21 under bars, because you'll see me again, I want to address that too, but things of that nature. And so, which leads me to say that I came here for two reasons. One, so that you all are more familiar with the Acadiana Regional Transportation Safety Coalition, and two, to ask you to support our efforts. Again, I'll be back, but you all are influencers, you're elected officials, you're community leaders. I need you out there, help us to spread the message. And just for a quick aside, how many of you have heard of the Destination Zero Deaths? Anyone in the public, Destination Zero Deaths? Raise your hand if you have. See, I got a lot of work to do, y'all gotta help me. Because what that is, it's making sure that everyone throughout Louisiana, and it comes from a state plan, and I'm responsible for the Acadiana region, and what that is, is keeping all roadway users safe, and that's the impaired driving, and as you know, distracted driving is coming up, we're getting a lot of talk about that. And when I say impaired, that's not just the drinking, that's the drug driving as well. I'm talking about, okay.
Well, just as a, I guess a little further thing of what Melissa's saying, that resolution that y'all passed about the local road safety program, that was 100% funded local road safety project. The state has a program where we identify the highest frequency crash locations and they will pay for low-cost improvements to those areas. So I'm working with the Public Works Department and the Traffic Department closely to develop our local road safety plan for Lafayette Parish to identify areas with the highest frequency crash locations and programming 100% state and federal funds for things like striping, back plates, which is on traffic lights to help make them more identifiable, things of that nature. And the state actually asked me to include a bike and pedestrian component too, because they're interested in funding some low-cost bike and pedestrian improvements in our area. Like I said, 100% funded, no local commitment, so it's a great program. Hope y'all participate. If y'all have any problem areas that y'all feel is a concern in y'all's district, please contact either the NPO or the Traffic Department and let us know, we'll look into it and see if we can get some projects for your area.
I have one more thing, because I wasn't sure if you were telling me time was up, Councilman Terrio, I didn't know if I had a timer. I just want to leave you with a statistic. And look, Councilman Lewis, this is Melissa, I just want to leave you with one statistic. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, every day, every single day, 28 people in the United States die in an alcohol-related crash. So that's one person every 51 minutes. And for me, and we all have families in here, we're all loved by, it's one person too many. And to go back to Ashley, because I will be back again, I'm gonna give you the stats for Acadiana, for Lafayette. I think you'd be quite surprised by that. So I would really appreciate, and we have a meeting coming up, October 10th, I'll send it to each one of you, councilmen and women, and I would love to see you there so you could hear even more about it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to ordinances for final adoption. Jeremy, could you please read item number 10?
Ordinance 154, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the attached agreement between the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration and the Lafayette Police Department in amending the fiscal year 1718 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $18,042 received from the DEA and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Terrio, second by Bellard. Council discussion. There is none any blue cards. Please call the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 162, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council approving a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a bed and breakfast into the existing main house in a residential, single-family zoning district, case number ZON 2017-24, 338 North Sterling Street, conditional use permit located generally on the corner east of North Sterling and south of Mud Avenue.
Motion by Kunk, second by Lewis. There is an amendment for this item. Mr. Kunk, you want to offer that amendment and explain it, please?
Yes, sir. This amendment would be under Section 2 within the sub-paragraph 3, and what it does, it clarifies the number of beds that can be used in the bed and breakfast, clarity being instead of saying seven, we shall say no additional guest rooms other than the four approved herein and the three carriage house guest rooms previously approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment in 1987 may be used with this bed and breakfast. And I'll offer that as an amendment.
Okay, that is being offered by Kunk, second by Lewis. Castiel, thank you very much, sir. Okay, we're gonna open the floor for council discussion on this matter. Mr. Kunk, clear.
Yes, that's the district that I do represent, Sterling Grove neighborhood, and there's some concern by a lot of the constituents, some of them for the bed and breakfast and some are against the bed and breakfast. And I'd like to have some clarification by Attorney Mr. Paul Escaut about some of the concerns that the constituent brought to my attention, and that's dealing with primary and secondary of a bed and breakfast. So we can, we have some clarification that might help make a decision with some of the constituents as well.
Your mic is on, Mr. Escaut.
All right, thank you, sir. Sure, in the ordinance, particularly... Section 2, sub-paragraph 1, I think is what you're referring to, Councilman Lewis, that refers to a requirement that the owner proprietor must live in the principal structure in the bed and breakfast facility, use shall be secondary to the principal use as a dwelling for his residential purposes. That language comes straight out of the...
That language comes straight out of the current UDC requirements under Article Five, Section 89-77, which requires, under the provision entitled Bed and Breakfast, that that condition exists. And it's my understanding that based upon the circumstances in this particular case that relate to this ordinance, that the owner slash proprietor is in fact using the primary structure, or the principal structure, I should say, as his primary residence.
So, saying that is that he's a single person.
Correct.
He lives in there, so he's going to occupy one bedroom. So, the other four bedroom, we are saying that he can do as he please, rent them out or...
The UDC, in addition to the primary provision that I quoted to you under Article Five, 89-77, also has a definition, I believe it's under Article Three, I'm sorry, Article Two, in the use table that defines bed and breakfast, which provides for an owner-occupied house, or part of a house, where no more than four rooms can be used. So, the UDC does comment on the number of rooms, and those, that total is four for the principal structure. So, if this gentleman wishes to use the principal structure as his primary residence, and only needs one bedroom, and use the other four as a bed and breakfast, he is within the confines of the UDC requirements.
And last time we met, a couple of weeks ago, I remember you talking about if he's in compliance, do you recall what we were talking about? I think it was signages and how many rooms are allowable to be rented out?
Yeah, I don't have the information on the signage, I think that maybe Mr. Parker could probably provide you with that better. As to the issue, as to the number of bedrooms, the four versus the seven, after having examined that issue, it became apparent that what's before the council today is the approval or disapproval of a conditional use permit strictly related to the four bedrooms in the principal structure. The other three were the subject of a 1987 Boza variance that is in place, that is not particularly relevant to the approval or disapproval of this ordinance.
So, what we have in front of us is that he can only use this structure as far as we talking about a bed and breakfast, he cannot use it for anything else but a bed and breakfast.
The conditional use permit would be specific to the use as a bed and breakfast, is my understanding.
And if he, for any instance, does something differently, what can the city do in a case like that?
Well, I suspect it would go into the normal process of someone that is noncompliant with a use permit, and would be subject to, off the top of my head, Councilman Lewis, I'm just going to surmise that I'm sure there are cease and desist articles available to the city to provide notice that he needs to stop the prohibited activity, and then in default of which, he's subject to either fines, civil court action, whatever the provisions provide.
Mr. Chair, is it okay if I speak with Mr. Jim Parker, if I call him up?
Yeah, that's fine.
How you doing, sir?
I'm well, sir.
Did you do a site inspection since our last meeting, what, two, three weeks ago, I believe it was?
I went by this morning, the signs that had been installed previously have been removed. I did not see any signs that were any violations.
Nothing in violation?
No. He still have a few things to do, you know, if this gets approved, he'll need to show compliance with some of these things, screening his parking lot, and a few other little things, but I didn't see any other violations today.
The few little things he have to do, this would be normal, right? Normal that it can be approved under the conditions that he still have to do a few things?
Right.
So, that's something that he doesn't have to do before it gets approved?
Just like any other, if a property got rezoned, rezoned from residential to commercial, they couldn't get a commercial permit until it got rezoned.
Okay.
He couldn't get his permit to do his bed and breakfast until the conditional use permit is approved.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, questions I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Terrio?
Yes, I guess both of you, Mr. Parker and Mr. Eschott, information was presented to the council, whatever it was, a couple of weeks ago, and there was some question of occupation. From what I'm hearing tonight, as you were mentioning, Mr. Eschott, that he has to occupy this establishment in order for it to be valid, is that a correct statement for a bed and breakfast?
I think the actual language in the UDC and in the ordinance says he must live in the principal structure, and use the dwelling for residential purposes.
He must live there.
He must live there and use it as his residential dwelling.
Okay. Mr. Parker, now the question to you at this point, is there any reason to believe that he is not living there at this time, or is an occupant of the house 24 hours a day? Would you even know that?
When I inspected the property before last month's meeting, his bedroom had an advertisement on the bed like all of the other beds did, and there were no clothes hanging, and what he showed me was his closet. I did not go back inside and inspect it, I understand that maybe Councilman Lewis may have gone in there, and Mr. Eschott said something about that he knows that it is his residence, so I'll defer to them on that.
So, when you went a couple of weeks ago, there was no razors, toothbrushes, no clothes, nothing in sight that showed an occupancy?
There was no evidence that he lived there.
And let me clarify something, I have no information, one way or the other, whether this man is living there or not. I've never been to the property, never talked to the gentleman, so I can't add to that or detract from that, one way or the other.
And I guess the question I'm having, in reference for the council here in making a decision, is that if this council approves this, and he is not an occupant of this particular establishment, then what, Mr. Eschott?
Then he would be in noncompliance with the conditional use permit, subject to whatever remedies are available to rectify the condition, or I would imagine, pull the permit.
Okay. Because again, this was brought up at the last meeting, I just want some clarification on it to see if that had been resolved, so, thank you, that's all I have for now, sir.
Mr. Cook?
For purposes of clarification, compliance with the residency requirement is based on the Boza action back in 1987, or is it contingent of what we're about to vote on?
It's a continual requirement in the UDC. It's actually in 89-77, Article Five, as a part of the descriptive provisions of what constitutes a bed and breakfast.
So, he would have to prove residency prior to the issuance of a CO, am I correct in that? For both, for all seven units? The CO would be for the four, which we may or may not approve tonight.
I believe that the three exist already.
Right.
The four, yes, he would have to be living there to get that. And now, as Mr. Eschott said, if he were found to be in violation, then we would pursue a zoning violation against him.
Does he need to provide proof of residency prior to the issuance of a permit?
We have not had, in this case, a bed and breakfast done as a conditional use permit to this point, so we have not put a process in place. However, I imagine we would require some documentation, especially given the council discussion, to prove residency.
Thank you.
Okay, my question would be to you calling, how would we determine if he had proof of residency?
Somebody going to go stay there.
I'm sorry?
Go stay there.
I mean, what constitute to say that he has permanent residency? I did visit the site a couple of weeks ago, and I did notice in the bedroom, he showed to me that where he's living at, he had a few clothes in the closet. Now, that's not telling me that it's his clothes, but they did have some clothes in the closet. So, I assume that he lives there, but again, that's my assumption. So, I'm trying to get some clarification, like Mr. Conk said, that if he have to have proof, so what determines the proof? How can we obtain proof to say the gentleman lived there?
Let me draw a parallel between this and, let's say, a store. Somebody wants to come in, the zoning allows the store, they submit plans for the store. We say, but you got to have parking, so they show us a plan that has parking, you got to do this and that, and they show all those things. They get a permit, they build the thing, and then once everything is in place, they get a CO. Similarly, he will need to submit plans, showing floor plans, bedrooms, parking, his buffers, if he wants a sign, he'll need to show that, and he will need to tell us in his permit that he, that this is his primary residence. And I have to believe him at that point.
Right.
Because that's the plans that he's submitting. Now, he gets a permit, goes to work, does his thing, you know, builds his screen, does his parking, does everything he's supposed to do, then he gets a certificate of occupancy based on his word, like everybody else that comes into our office every day. Gets his CO and he goes to work, and at that point, he is supposed to live there. Arguably, he's supposed to be living there now, because the Board of Zoning Adjustments variance was that included that he lived there. That was part of the condition of the 1987 approval. So, he's really supposed to be living there now. But, as far as what's being before y'all tonight, with the extra four in that one house, he tells us he's living there, he gets his permit, and we go from there.
So, actually, we're saying that if this is approved or not approved, but regardless, say this is approved today, he still have to go through a normal process, and then if you guys find out that he's not living there, you pull his permit? That's what we are saying?
We will do something to try to get compliance out of the site, yes, sir. I'm not going to say I'll pull his permit. There may be a cease and desist, we might send him a letter saying, hey, you got to live there, and if he doesn't, then we'll, you know, we'll ramp it up there from there, eventually take him to court if it got that far. But, you know, I would need to know that, I'd need some kind of proof.
So, by approving this doesn't mean that everything is 100% go ahead, you still have to approve things to your department?
Just like the store that submits a plan on a vacant piece of land. He's saying that he is going to do these things, the store gets a permit because they said they're going to do these things. They walk in the door, say, I want a permit to do this, we say, okay, they go and do it. And once they do it, they get their certificate of occupancy. Basically the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I want to make sure that the questions that has come up is being fully addressed, and I think it has been almost to the best of the way it was asked. I think the concern of the neighboring community to this lot, this parcel, and I think what Mr. Lewis was looking for is if someone complains that he is not occupying the location as required by the statute, can you give a description of how bringing someone into compliance works, and if they do not come into compliance, then of course, at that point, cease and desist and those things come forward? But, I know historically, the department is not into shutting down businesses, that's not the reputation that the department wants, it's about getting people to comply with the laws on the books. So, I think if you could just address, if someone says that he is not living there, they will make a formal complaint, how would that process work?
We would start off by sending him a letter, saying we received a complaint about this. Please call me within a week to discuss. If he doesn't, I mean, I can paint a couple scenarios, if he doesn't call, I'll send a second letter saying, hey, look, you know, we sent this letter attached about you don't live there anymore, call me, let's talk about it, just trying to, you know, keep the amicability up. And if they don't answer, then I would send a zoning violation, saying, you know, we've got some problems. Answer, or we'll send it to the city prosecutor, and let him go tell the judge why he won't cooperate. Best case is that we send him a letter, he says, yeah, I live there, come over, I'll show you what I do, and we investigate, however that would be. Don't have manpower to stake the place out, you know, but...
Right, and that's my point, I don't want anyone to be misled, and I don't want to create any expectation of the department. There's talk about having some compliance things in place, but you don't quote-unquote have an investigative arm per se, you don't have people you send out at midnight to see if there's a car in the drive, you know, we, that, you know, things like homestead, you know, for some things, homestead satisfies it well. If someone doesn't own a property, but as a manager, he's required to stay there, a homestead would not be given to him, but this is operating at a business, so the eligibility for homestead doesn't exist. So, some of the more apparent or typical things that can prove residency versus occupancy, you know, I don't want us to really get caught up into that, because that's just going to really muddy the waters. And I don't want the department to set themselves up, and people are going to be expecting something of the department that just don't exist. We're in a country, we're in a state, we're in a city where we hope that people will be honest, people can provide pictures, I know many people who own property, and they very seldom listen to that, you know, so what does that mean? You know, they got other properties, or they spend the night out, or, you know, there's all types of things that can happen, and what I don't want is for somebody to get hung up on that, and then the department is held to something that you just can't do. That's why I wanted you to kind of explain how a complaint would be dealt with, and for Mr. Lewis's purpose, what he's been trying to pull out, how that's going to look, because the first night he goes on vacation, or takes a trip, or go out of town, or visit a relative, that doesn't necessarily constitute he doesn't occupy the property, right? So, it's those types of things that I want to make sure that we have perspective on.
Right, and we try to maintain, you know, some open conversation between people that we're dealing with in that respect. And, you know, if I get a call from somebody, I would send a letter, or, you know, maybe contact the manager, maybe he went somewhere, like you said, on vacation. I want to go on vacation.
Ms. Cook?
Yes, Mr. Parker, I just have a question about, this is not our only bed and breakfast we have in the city, and I guess I'm just thinking of consistency in terms of, how do we treat this particular question with other bed and breakfasts that we have? I mean, are we, you know, are we checking, you know, constantly to see if that person that is running it or living there is living there at the time, or, I mean, is this something that we routinely are concerned about, or, and have had lots of calls about?
Not checking constantly.
But, I mean, is this an issue that has come up before with our other bed and breakfast establishments?
Oh, we have not gotten any complaints that I'm aware of in the last several years at least, about any of the other bed and breakfasts.
Okay, so it's not necessarily, you know, an ongoing...
Ramp up problem.
Problem, okay. That's was what I was just curious about. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion, any other questions? I think you could take a seat, sir. Okay, so what we have here, we have an ordinance, and then we have an amendment to the ordinance, and I think we have eight speakers who are here to speak to this issue. When an amendment is offered on the floor such as this, what happens is that you could speak to the amendment that Mr. Conk has put out, and which was seconded by Mr. Castile, and then come back and speak to the ordinance if and when it is amended. Or you could choose not to speak to the amendment, but you still have your opportunity to speak to the ordinance itself, that does not go away. And it's just that some people don't want to repeat themselves or say the same thing twice, so you will have that option to speak on the ordinance if it is in fact amended and goes forward. So, what we're going to do is, since we're only eight, with that explanation, is there anyone who wants to speak to the amendment and the ordinance? By show of hands? Okay, seeing none, so all eight speakers who are signed up will reserve, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Conk to reread that amendment for you. Mr. Conk, could you please read that amendment?
The original ordinance refers to seven guest rooms, and what we are doing with the amendment is actually making a differentiation between the three that have been previously approved by the Board of Zoning Adjustment in 1987, and the four which are on the table for voting tonight. Same number, different breakdown. Same number, different breakdown.
Does that explanation satisfy? That's okay? Okay. So with that said, I'm going to ask the question again. Again, you maintain your spot to speak on the ordinance, but because an amendment was made on the floor, if you so choose to speak to the amendment, that would be allowed. So by show of hands, does anyone desire to speak to the amendment only? You will only be speaking to the amendment, not the entire ordinance, only what Mr. Kunk has offered? All right, so there's two people who'd like to speak. Can I get a third? Three people would like to speak. Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to do roll call. If your name is called and you do not want to speak, just say pass and you'll be called up again when the ordinance come. If you're one of the three people who have raised their hand when your name is called, you could come forward. First speaker, please.
Carol O'Quinn? Bonjour. Comment ça va? Bonsoir, je veux dire. Je suis fière d'être ici à Lafayette avec tous mes cousins et mes cousines qui sont ici pour ouvrir cette belle, belle place ici de Sud-Mont Street. I want to thank you. My name is Carol O'Quinn. I have a bed and breakfast in Bell River, Louisiana. I'm president of the Louisiana Bed and Breakfast Association. I am here to support this endeavor and Mr. Ravi and applaud the board for scrutinizing this new establishment in this area and addressing the questions and concerns that you have tonight and rightfully so. We did a walkthrough today. We walked through a lot of our bed and breakfasts. We have hands-on. We want our facilities that belong to the association to be facilitated in a reputation that reflects cleanliness, that follows guidelines and respectful of city council, city government, police, jurors. We saw in eight months just a transformation take place here. Small business is extremely important to all our communities. When we walked in today, the first people we met...
Ma'am, let me do this for you.
Yes, you want me to say if I want four rooms or seven rooms?
I want you to speak to the...
Yes. And to that I say, and to that I say, as seeing the situation and following the guidelines, as a businesswoman, seven rooms are better than four rooms. You have approved the three rooms, correct? And that was more or less in earlier times. Now you want the approval of the four bedrooms. And it appears to me that this man has met the residency situation. We saw the clothes, we saw the TV, we saw the receipts, and I'm just here to testify that I saw that this afternoon. And I would solicit that you please approve the seven concept of this bed and breakfast. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Janice Delano?
Again, we're speaking to the amendment only, only the amendment that was stated by Mr. Kunk. The full ordinance as amended will be spoken to immediately following the vote on the amendment. So if you come forward, the amendment only. You want to pass on that? All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Robert Micho?
All right. Bonsoir, comment ça va? My cousin aussi. All right, yeah, I'm a, the Sterling Grove neighborhood. My grandparents lived there and my father grew up there and I lived there 30 years ago. So I don't live there now, but I do help out Mr. Ravi at the bed and breakfast in question with French-speaking tourists. And I want to tell y'all, I was watching a little over 20 years ago, one of these meetings here about I-49.
Sir, sir. The amendment.
I know, but I'm getting to that point. I'm trying...
We need to get there fast and in a hurry. No, no, we need to be there right now.
Okay, well, I think they should be given, why you want to, these, this type of business is renewable resources. It preserves our houses and trees that a former president's chamber of commerce 20-something years ago was opposition to, who was re-elected and elected to run this parish twice. Anyway, but why do these aspects have to be opposition? You should be happy to have this type of business in your neighborhood because it preserves the historical cultural value of your neighborhood. In the amendment, you should let these people have as many rooms as they want because the people that come here are highbrow tourists, mostly from foreign countries. They want to spend money on local entertainment, restaurants, swamp tours, they go shopping here.
So you support, you support...
I'm supporting the amendment, right.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Kenneth Kemper Bowen III.
Pass. Next speaker, please.
Ravi Dugala.
The amendment only, let's, we're going to take a deep breath and focus. The amendment only.
Good evening. I bought this property eight months ago. And when I bought the property, the property needed restoration work. And as I started doing restoration work, I needed more money to restore this property to its original glory. So therefore, giving me a permit to operate more rooms would give me more money so the business can self-sustain. So I really like to have more rooms. So I can not only, most people here probably think I'm doing this for money, but that's not true. I'm doing this for the love of the house because the house came to me. I never looked for the house. So I'm trying to restore it, therefore I need more money to restore it. So if you all grant me permission to have more rooms, I will be able to restore it. It's not for me, I'm not from here. It's for the people of Lafayette. This is, I think this is the only functional home that is built in 1820. So if you let me give me more rooms, I will restore it where if a dignitary comes from Canada or France or somewhere, you can bring them there and show how we used to live back in the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. B.O. Barrio?
Mr. President, members of the council. I would like to speak in favor of the amendment. I think that the amount of time that y'all have put into the thought process of what's going on in the neighborhood is commendable. I think that y'all have taken into account the intent of the original ordinance. The original ordinance was designed with Bois de Champs in mind. It was originally designed for Bois de Champs. And it was initially intended to take into consideration the concerns of the neighbors and limit the relative size that this bed and breakfast would grow into. It's obvious by your amendment that y'all have taken that into account. The concern that we all have of primary concern is not the bed and breakfast, it's where the bed and breakfast would go. Because it was fairly obvious to us after we got to know what was going on that it was not a bed and breakfast. It was a boutique hotel. It was definitely a boutique hotel. The resident, the owner occupied, the owner, manager was not a resident, okay? And the main distinction between a boutique hotel is an absentee landlord and a number of rooms being rented. That's what was going on. I personally like Ravi. I think he's a great little businessman. But the way he was running this bed and breakfast was wrong. And that was the primary concern and that is the crux of the problem that exists. If he operates as a bed and breakfast, we'll have no problems with it. We've lived with a bed and breakfast for 30 years now, 35 years. We've done very well, not one instance. This place was not being run as a bed and breakfast. Ravi basically made the statement that he admired my passion for the historic district. One of the common threads of everybody that's spoken is that we all love our neighborhood. We love our lifestyle. We don't want to see it broken. We want a bed and breakfast and I commend y'all on your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bernard Rubisho?
Mr. Rubisho? Mr. Rubisho passes.
Finally, Dr. Olivier Chatlin de Provelle.
Councilmen, ladies, Mr. Mayor. You were talking earlier about how to approve that Mr. Ravi Dagula is a resident of this place. I suppose that you, having run as councilman, you had to prove where you resided. You had to bring out different identification that proved, people didn't go in your house to look if you had clothes in your closets. What you could prove for residency, government-issued ID, residential deed or lease, utility bill, bank statement, driver license, car registration, homestead example, these are real documents.
Doctor, I know you heard me, okay? And this is the perfect setting for the Boy Scouts here. We want to hear, we've asked that you focus in on the amendment. After that, you get to come back and say all these things, okay? So if you could focus in, Mr. Kunk, put an amendment rather than address it in seven-room capacity to break off the three original rooms and the four rooms being considered. That's what we're trying to get right here and then you come back, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, apologies. Yes, I support the limitation to seven rooms because we like having a bed and breakfast in our neighborhood. What we do not want to see is this bed and breakfast slipping into a full commercial operation, turning into a hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that the final speaker? Okay. So what's going to happen, there's no council responses to any of those. We're going to vote on the amendment. Then we're going to open up the floor again for everyone who is signing to speak, to speak to the full ordinance. And at that point, you could let it roll, okay? If you want to, yeah. All right, so let's call the roll on the amendment, please.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one? District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Okay, now that the ordinance has been amended, we're going to take public comment on the ordinance as it has been amended. Madam Clerk, first speaker, please.
Carol O'Quinn?
Ms. O'Quinn passes.
Members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Janice Delano and I am the current treasurer of the Louisiana Bed and Breakfast Association and past president of the association. I'm also a bed and breakfast owner. The reason I'm here, you're probably wondering why we would come from Baton Rouge to support our colleague here, is because I was in his shoes 27 years ago in Baton Rouge. And because he's breaking some ground here with a 1987 ordinance that's already in effect and owners have changed, now he's having to come back and ask permission for something that's been going on for quite some time. Now, as Carol, my colleague, stated, we have been to the property. It's a lovely property. Mr. Dagula is trying to preserve history. He's trying to give, he already told you this, he's trying to give the people of Lafayette something to be proud of and preserve something, and he needs money to do that. So I, please forgive me if I'm confused because this amendment, I'm not sure I completely understand all of this, but seven rooms is really quite reasonable for a bed and breakfast. I mean, in Baton Rouge, this exact same ordinance that I exist under allows nine rooms. And yes, it is either owner occupied or has a resident inkeeper on site. And I mean, this is really just for the running of the operation. I mean, I have yet to figure out how I can run this place 24 hours a day and not live there, to tell you the truth. I'd be running back and forth an awful lot. But anyway, I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and I'd like to support Mr. Dagula and the efforts that he's trying to make. This supports tourism. And as a matter of fact, we met some of his guests and visited with them, and they enjoy coming to Lafayette. I mean, this is a beautiful little community. So if there's anything that you can do to support his efforts, I would just like to respectfully ask you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Micho?
The Micho passes.
Kenneth Kemper Bowen III.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your service. Kenneth Lowell, a number of you, I know, have visited this property in question. It actually was our home for 18-plus years of my life. It served not only as a center of government and housing for the city of Lafayette, but to have somebody like Ravi, who actually hosted a family function for us this past summer, which by the way, was no violation if anybody wants to know. It was one heck of a party, I might add. But brought back so many memories to us as a family. And what I'd like to implore with y'all as you vote on this ordinance coming up is to support him. He is supporting this community, hands down. He is not only creating jobs for this community, but in that historical district, he has actually improved the property since he brought it, bought it. We had this family function, it was a wedding, and there was a picture that was shown in 1975 that was on the cover of Time Magazine, where my sister and brother-in-law, their daughter Rachel back here, who actually put it together for them, you can tell them now it wasn't a surprise back then, they were surprised. But on the cover of Time Magazine, there was a picture of them as a young couple, just married. And 40 years later, they came back to the same house and took the same pose, except this time they had children and grandchildren with them. So the history continues. I ask you to give this man to continue to not only express the history of Lafayette, but to invest in Lafayette, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ravi Dugala.
I think now I have a little more time to talk. Well, I am a part-owner of this bed and breakfast, which is a historic Charles Mouton house built in 1820s. We're not trying to rezone this property. We're just trying to get a conditional variance to operate it as a bed and breakfast and of course, more rooms. Well, I would like to tell a little bit more about myself and why I'm trying to do this. So when I got admitted to UL, my dad gave me $200 and he put me in a plane and I don't know anybody in Lafayette and I came all by myself. So I think, deep down, I really think that the hospitality that people showed to me and the kindness made me the person I am today. Not that I'm very successful, but I don't depend on anybody. So I feel like I should do something and really, I know you all are here because probably most of you all think that I'm doing this for a commercial reason, which it is because I need to support people who work for me. But it goes beyond that. When you love a house and you want to do it, I mean, I'll tell you a story. A house came to me, I didn't go for this house. I was working in North Side and I'm living in South Side when I was going to school. And my cab driver used to take me around this house in 2003, around this house because you want to pick up more people and make more money. That's when I saw the house. So I liked the house and in 2015, the house came to me because the banker called me and he said, hey, she thought I was a patele. So basically, pateles do hotels. So he said, do you want to do this? Then I thought it was a calling for me because I like to restore houses and this is the one I want to do. And I used to go to this house all the time outside, but never inside. So that is how I got to this. And when I bought the property and I started restoring, I have a lot of things I have to do and I was working by myself because I couldn't pay a lot of people. I was doing it myself. 18 hours a day, I got a shell. So I was working and I needed more money. And when I found out that the main house doesn't have permits, so that's when we were here, we are here, we are all here because I noticed that it doesn't have the necessary permits to operate. So then I applied for this. So the second thing, because of all the kindness and hospitality that people showed me, I feel like I should give something back to the community and this is where everything started. I feel like I should give something back to the community and this is where everything started. And I'm just maybe like 20% into it, so there's a lot more that I need to do. Not to mention what other people had said, I encouraged a lot of history, a lot of culture. I have people who talk about Cajun culture, queer culture. I mean, we have, we have people, tourists come from every corner of Europe. I mean, you come to breakfast, you'll have five or six countries there. Not only are they coming to know about our culture, they're coming here to spend the money from somewhere else here. I think that will help our economy. And, and they will go back and tell 10 more people and you need visitors here. But if you notice, the people from Europe doesn't like to stay in, in a cookie cutter, I mean hotels. They like to stay in bed and breakfast because they would like to know a little bit more about the culture, a little bit more about everything else. We have Cajun musicians that come play in the evenings. We, we put a lot more money into promoting culture. I think I'm doing what you all would be doing or you all want me to do. Well, the second thing is I have a lot of investors in the North Side. I like the North Side. I have a lot more properties in the North Side. I mean, I did so many houses in North Side that I changed the neighborhood sometimes because they follow me after what I do. Well, last, and finally, I was going to tell you this. I would like to thank everyone that came to see what I did. And I would like to invite everybody that didn't come to come to see what I do. And if I was, if I'm doing anything wrong, I would want you to suggest and let me know what I was doing wrong so I can have, I'll have a chance to correct it. When I got to this property first, the Sterling Grove Association came to me and they want to use my grounds to do a festival. And, and I opened my doors, I cooked food, I paid for music and I made them have a festival there. And, and that is my involvement in the neighborhood. So I am, I'm doing my part. I think if you help me, I can do a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dr. B.O. Barrio.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I, again, I applaud your efforts. I, I think that Lafayette really has a unique opportunity in this situation to further the historic neighborhood of Sterling Grove. Sterling Grove is really a very, very, very unique entity in all of Lafayette. Ravi has talked about investing money. I'd be willing to bet that I have invested every last penny more than he has, as well as all of our neighbors combined. And I think our collective investment makes his investment small by comparison. I think that, I think that the main thing that should be taken away from this though is the fragility of old neighborhoods. Living in an old house is, is, got its rewards, but man, it's, it's tough. These old houses really take a lot to keep together. And when a neighborhood starts falling apart little pieces by little pieces, the example I used last meeting was the address at 603. It started out as a single-family resident. It's now got four apartments on the property. I mean, it's, it's, it's terrible. The city of Lafayette has an opportunity to develop. Historic Preservation Society and the, the other one, the Association or whatever it is for Historic Preservation, the Alliance for Historic Preservation, these entities are non-existent. They give us no support at all. And that reflects back on y'all, your stewardship of our neighborhood. Because guys, our future is in your hands. And if you don't give us support, we're going to go down the tubes and it's going to hurt the city from a tourism standpoint. Now, supporting Ravi is a big deal. And we in the neighborhood want a vibrant bed and breakfast. But we expect some help from y'all for the whole neighborhood, not just for one entity. And I, and I put this back on your shoulders. Y'all need to get this Historic Preservation Society and Alliance for Historic Preservation off their butts because they do nothing. They do nothing. And I challenge y'all to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Next speaker, please.
Bernard Robichaud.
Mr. Robichaud. Mr. Robichaud passes.
Final speaker, Dr. Olivier Chatland de Provelle.
I am Dr. Olivier Chatland de Provelle, president of Sterling Grove Neighborhood Association. I apologize earlier, bringing all these examples of, because the question seemed to be on proving that Mr. Ravi Dagula lives in this house. And as I was saying, and you all know, when you decided to run as councilman, you had to bring some kind of official documentation. And the list is as follows. Government-issued IDs, residential deed or lease, utility bill, bank statement, driver license, car registration, and mainly homestead exemption. We all have homestead exemption on our primary residence and that should be a given. When a residence is not, is owned by a business in LLC, it, it becomes, is it a residence or is it a business? That's where we're getting on, on the border of a, a lot of questions. Coming back to, coming here to Lafayette, when I first came to Lafayette, I came down from Pennsylvania with a $100 car, got accepted at UL. I've been here since 1992 and I did my PhD here. I mean, Lafayette was a unique community and that's why I'm still here because I consider Lafayette home. Lafayette is my town. And the people here have a very unique welcoming and greatness in them. That is something very unique that we have here compared to the rest of the country. A very traditional, how could I say, way of being that doesn't exist in many places in the country. Europeans use a bed and breakfast? Yes, they do. And when I had people or when I had conferences and some faculties would come in, I would put them at the bed and breakfast Bois de Champs. We offer a bed and breakfast. But we don't want to see that bed and breakfast slipping into a numerous amount-